Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to a special meeting for the Salfish Project. A special meeting on the Town Montgomery Planning Board for Tuesday, September 24th, 2019. We first need to continue the public hearing on the site plan and SEU permit. So, I'll ask if anybody has any comments. Please be brief, but come forward and state your name for the record and ask your question or state your comment. Yes, Don?
Don Berg, Montgomery, New York.
Fred, it's my understanding when you have this amount of people here, there's hundreds standing outside, that the proper thing to do is bring these people in here and have the proper location where everybody could be part of the speeding process.
We didn't expect you.
You're back. They canceled speeding and moved on?
No, we're not doing that, sorry.
So, you're not going to allow all those people outside, including people from our side that are standing outside and not able to come up?
Yeah.
You want those hundreds of people all in?
We've already talked to the union people. We've expressed a desire for them not to come in tonight, to leave room for the public to come in and make their comments.
Okay. Fred, on this past week, David Church responded to a letter sent to him by the Village of Montgomery pertaining to all these projects. It was, that was in response of residents in the Village of Montgomery about the traffic control problems that are going to occur through these projects. I'm going to give you a copy of the letters and a little statement that I have here. And basically, all I was talking about is David Church will be in the Village of Montgomery on October 1st, and I would appreciate if this board had members there for that meeting to talk about a comprehensive traffic study. A comprehensive traffic study is involving all these warehouses, not allowing the applicant to talk about their little traffic study. We've been asking this board to consider comprehensive plans from day one, and you haven't listened to us. So, now, the Village of Montgomery had to step in, and they have a meeting that is going to be open to allow any member to come in and discuss that. And I would appreciate that this board attend that meeting and to speak on the matter. It's important. It's something that you guys have left out and refuse to talk about. My second comment is about the great union workers, men and women over here. Again, we're not here in opposition to anybody working. What we are in opposition to is the local labor law. In March of this year, they instituted a local labor law here in the Town of Montgomery that there would have to be 85% of local labor here. I congratulated Matthew Stoddard for doing that. He's the president of the, a portion of the ironworkers. I congratulate him. I was the first one to go up and shake his hand. But what did Matthew Stoddard do in July? He reversed that, requiring only 60% of you folks. Maybe you need to talk to your leadership instead of coming here screaming about jobs. Talk to your leadership. That's where it starts. Thank you.
Yes, Beverly.
Beverly Burtz, Town of Montgomery. First of all, I have those minutes from the IDA meeting where Mr. Stoddard said 60% is acceptable. So, you guys really need to talk to your leadership. If you want to read them, I got them. Now, to the planning board. Last evening, a local businessperson, taxpayer, and effective citizen with whom I am in strong agreement and support, expressed in writing to this board a strong suggestion that you, you are the only agency standing between us, the residents of this town, and this developer, Blue Water, that you demand from this developer that they be prohibited from, as well as being prevented from, cutting down any trees or in any way touching any kind of soil, living thing, on this proposed project area until every permit, all proof of fiscal viability, all guarantees, as well as proof of potential occupancy documents are received and approved. As you, this board, you are our policy agency, I implore you to use your moral judgment and assure the residents of this town that these bare, minimal considerations be taken into consideration and met. Please, our oxygen and the welfare of our livelihood is in peril. Blue Water has stated in their IDA application as of December of 2018 that the property is going to be turned over to another agency, USAA, for development. So, now, there is an agency and another agency, and that agency has the right to sell it to anyone. So, where is the developer? Who owns property? Who do we come back to when there's a problem? All we see are tree stumps because they have the right when they sell it to, once you guys give the final, clear the final statements, they can go in and they can clear cut the land. Stumps. That's all we're left with. Now, isn't it ironic that this developer wants to cut down all those trees? And it could be as a result of your action or your inaction that this happens, that there is another agency in this town called the Conservation of Advisory Council who on Sunday, December, or September 29th, will be planting 100 trees, not trees that are native to the area, along the Waukegan River. Trees that are fully expanded, producing all the oxygen that we need, or trees that are cut down and little trees that'll take decades to grow. Please, keep the trees for as long as possible. Our very health and breath depend on it. Thank you.
Ms. Barbara?
Hi, I wish you had a little easel tonight, but you don't. So, is it okay if I just leave this?
Certainly.
I'm big on visuals. And this is what the project looks like. This is what the project actually looks like, surrounded by water. That's the buffer zone. That's the building and little teeny things. That's where snow goes. It doesn't snow very much here. So, just keep all of this in mind. On the 12th, September 12th, we listened to two candidates give a presentation for an updated master plan. Their presentations really reinforced that we're in a unique position to truly shape the direction for our future. We all understand that zoning and use are woefully out of date, but you, as members of the planning board, can require all applicants be held to the highest standards until a new master plan and associated zoning, uses, and definitions are updated and refined. In the IDA application submitted by Blue Water, they stated that once approvals are granted, the project will be turned over to USAA Realty. We have the opportunity now to hold the future applicant or whoever they decide. We'll proceed with this project, be held to the highest standards. Since Blue Water is not the actual developer, these requirements must continue with this project, and not to require this would be a dereliction of your responsibility to all of us. Regarding the site plan and special use, our climate is changing more rapidly than ever. Weather patterns are more erratic. We typically see eight and a half inches of rain in August and September. However, in 2018, we experienced 14 and a half inches, almost double. This applicant has acknowledged that stormwater volume will increase. You must demand the highest standards from this and every project design and require them to minimize this increase so that neighboring properties are not flooded, wetland size is not increased, and the properties along the Tin Brook are not impacted either. In Section 2 of 2005 Local Law Number 1, it allows you to require the bare minimum of an applicant. However, it's within your authority to require a more stringent approach in order to protect property and water supplies. The following is directly pulled from the law. Minimize the total annual volume of stormwater runoff, which runs away from any specific site during the following development, during and following development to the maximum extent practicable, and reduce stormwater runoff rates and volumes, soil erosion, and non-point source pollution whenever possible through stormwater management practices. The key words are maximum extent practicable and whenever possible. It is in your right to require more than the bare minimum of this developer and every developer. You should never expect, accept, the most common developer notation of "to the greatest extent practicable" and require it to be "to the greatest extent possible." Blue Water Industrial Partners, also known as Blue Water Property Group, has proposed a 1 million-plus square foot warehouse on the high point of land surrounded by regulated wetland. They have requested a zone change for a portion of the property to accommodate this building and included originally a subdivision on the original plan. Although they dropped the subdivision request, the planning board stated that the transfer of the wastewater treatment plant was not a consideration at the present. The subdivision still appears on their drawings and the FEIS states that they will offer to dedicate the WWTP to the town. While the town is not under any obligation to accept it, the town is also not under any obligation to include the public in the discussion and can accept it at will. Right now, there's close to 2.5 million square feet of warehouse space under consideration by this board alone. You need to address the 2019 SECA regulations that reinforce the importance these projects have on the character of the community and the cumulative impact of multiple projects that have on both our physical and social environment. There's been little consideration in the past for the cumulative impact of multiple projects. Per the SECA handbook, cumulative impacts occur when multiple actions affect the same resource or resources. These impacts can occur when the incremental or increased impacts of an action or actions added to other past, present, and reasonably foreseeable future actions. Cumulative impacts can result from a single action or from a number of individually minor but collectively significant actions taking place over a period of time. They do not have to be associated with one sponsor or applicant. They may include indirect and secondary impacts and long-term impact and synergistic effect. Cumulative impacts must be assessed when actions are proposed or can be foreseen as likely to take place simultaneously or sequentially in a way that combined impacts may be significant. As with direct impacts, assessment of cumulative impacts should be limited to consideration of reasonably foreseeable impacts and not speculation. The impact of increased traffic, stormwater runoff, noise, air quality, and an increase of available jobs that do not provide a living wage in this town and county must be considered. These impacts are not speculative. They are known negative impacts. Are the impacts on non-physical resources that should be considered when determining significance? Yes. There may be environmental impacts related to various community or regional values, not necessarily associated with physical resources. Examples include aesthetic impacts, impairment of community character, growth inducement, and social and economic conditions. This project has a direct impact on the character of our community. It's the entrance way to Montgomery from both Stewart Airport and Route 84. A singular, monstrous warehouse building combined with heavy traffic will be the first impression people will have. They will not see the beauty of our land, our town and villages, the richness of its history, or the vibrant cultural community. It is likely many will not even bother to explore further and simply take the next exit off 84. The project will also be the only one of its kind in the corridor. There is no more available land along this corridor for significant development. It does not in any way encourage economic diversity. It will be the only project of its type in an area of predominantly smaller businesses. In fact, it creates a monoculture and impedes economic diversity. They go on to state, "The legislature has defined environment to include, among other things, existing patterns of population concentration, distribution or growth, and existing community neighborhood character." And court decisions have held that impacts on community character must be considered in making determinations of significance, even if there are no other physical impacts on the environment. I can't imagine what this area will look like after this project is built, or what will become of Mr. Stella's Sculpture Garden, or whether my tenants will have the ability to come and go safely on this road since with the increased traffic, they won't be able to turn left and to have the most valuable portion of our land flooded by the increased runoff. You should note that this is discharge point 1, feeds to this wetland, feeds to my property. In reading through old Town Board minutes and articles, I found a quote that I believe is worth sharing. On February 6th, 2014, you, Mr. Reischle, in your capacity as chairman of the planning board, stated the following in regard to added uses in the I-1 and I-2 zones. And while this was stated in reference to a zoning issue, you, as members of the planning board, face the same pressure now. And you stated, I'm quoting from your, from the minutes. So, finally, in closing, the planning board, we are aware that you're being lobbied heavily by the applicant, his attorney, and the economic development forces in the county. We submit to you that all of these interest groups have a financial incentive to have you change the zoning, and none of them have what is best for the town's benefit that we, as town officials, all should have. You, as members of the board, have an obligation to us to act in our best interest and not that of a developer who has yet to prove themselves in the construction and development market, your lawyers, or the Orange County Partnership who brought this project to the town. Warehouse projects are either new or once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. We need to look to future economic models and not encourage the duplication of a use that already exists in a different part of the town. This is the last entrance way to the town that is open for development. It's our last chance to make first impression. I urge you to place the most stringent requirements on the applicant, to hold them accountable for maximizing mitigation of stormwater runoff, to prohibit the cutting of trees and clearing of growth in this pristine wildlife corridor until all permits have been issued and financial viability has been demonstrated, to require more mature plantings, to screen the property, mitigate noise, and replace at least some of what will be destroyed forever, not to harm the neighbors' properties with excessive noise, reduced air quality, increased traffic that all result in the reduction of their land value.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Salfish?
Yes.
Gentlemen in the back, first?
Okay.
My name is Matthew Stoddard. I live in Walden, and I am the president of the Ironworkers Local Corps of Duty.
Can you lift the microphone up a little bit?
Yes, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to, they're right about the labor policy. It does state 85%. But what they're missing, the point that they're missing is in the labor policy, there is exclusions. There's three of them. One of them is if there isn't enough local labor. The other one is if it's a specialty item. And the third is if local labor doesn't come within 20% of the out-of-state labor. If local labor comes within 20% of the out-of-state labor, according to the labor policy, they have to give it to local labor. The problem was, the company asked for an exclusion from the labor policy because they were not within the 20% of the out-of-state, two contractors from Tennessee and from North Carolina. So, what was requested from, for the IDA board is there would be 0% local labor on the structural steel, and the structural steel alone, it wasn't the whole job, it was just the structural steel. There would have been 0% because local labor couldn't get within the 20%. So, what has happened is a jersey outfit, a union jersey outfit that pays pension and healthcare, came in and said, "Listen," they have an international agreement, and the international agreement states they get 50% local labor, 50% of their own labor for wherever they're building at. So, what they said was, "Listen, we can't get to the 85% because we can't," they needed the comfortability of their own labor, some of their own labor. So, what they said is, "We'll go with 60%. We'll use 60% local labor instead of the 85%." And they were able to get to where they had to be. So, what, when it was talked about, we felt that 60% local labor was better than 0% local labor. So, I know this has nothing to do with this board tonight. Anything IDA policies or local labor languages has nothing to do with this board, but I just wanted to clear the record a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you very much. My name's Anita Falcone, and I live in the Village of Montgomery. I've been there for over 15 years. I have a small business, and I do want to say not only thank you to you, but also to everyone who's shown up. My goodness. And what I want you to know is, the residents and the business owners of the village and the town, we are not your enemy. Okay? What is happening here is a big change. People are waking up. We're waking up not only to live by the God almighty dollar, you know, it says on the dollar bill, "In God we trust," but that's not the reason why we need to be making decisions as important as this. And just for your benefit, the union workers and corporations, in the long run, we're fighting for you, these little noise makers from the village and the towns. Okay? We, yes, I am the background noise. Because sooner or later, what's going to happen is, I'm sorry, what's going to happen is, a lot of these big corporations and warehouses, they're going to go to automation. What is so bad, and they're going to lose their jobs. So, what is so bad about taking a look at the bigger picture? We're nobody's enemy. What's happening is, I've been going to these meetings now since October of last year. Okay? Remember Kathy Pitts? Yes, you do. Here's the thing, we're waking up. I don't want my food from Amazon. I want my food from the local farmers, and we have an incredible amount of important, beautiful soil here. Everybody that I know is waking up to the small businesses. We should really be looking at tourism here. If these warehouses go in, Amazon, Blue Fish, Sail Water, who do you think is going to be able to get into the towns and the villages? There'll be no reason. We have a responsibility to the people who have lived here all along and paid the taxes. Yes, we need tax-ratable businesses, but to what end? We have lived here, and this farmer, the Browns, have lived here for centuries. They've been paying taxes for a very long time. What is so bad if we could stand up together? You can see, we've been coming to the meetings, and we're going to help you now. It was on me to pay more attention, not just you. But we have the ability to show the government. You know Albany Cuomo, who thinks this needs to be a trucking maven? He doesn't live here. We have something very valuable. We can do better than this. We can pay our taxes. We cannot have a board that just makes decisions on the dollar. It has to be about the quality of life and the bigger picture, and that's what we've been asking you to do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great you had it. How are you?
How you doing?
Good.
Salfish, no. Okay?
Yeah!
How many of these people that are here tonight in the parking lot are from the Town of Montgomery?
Yeah!
How many?
Yeah!
What percentage? 2%? 3%? We're talking, they don't have an interest in the Town of Montgomery here. Okay? Now, I still, Mr. Hoyt said last time when I recommended, I give you 10 to 1 odds on the referendum for having a public vote on this in the Town of Montgomery. In other words, the Town of Montgomery people would vote this down. They would vote it down. If you went for a referendum in November, they would say no.
Mr. Bistrick, you can't do it under the law.
You, to that I reply, you can't take zoning and encompass from a 13,000-square-foot warehouse all the way to a million and a half-square-foot warehouse. You can't do that. The people have a right to determine where these big buildings go, and this is not being done. This is not being done. It's being done under this little idea that it says in the zoning that it's a warehouse. It changes the whole complexion of the town, this thing. I guarantee you, this is going to be a disaster. If they put this in, it'll be an environmental disaster, number one, and it is only going to create temporary, a little sustaining jobs here for some people, but it is not going to be a good thing. I think you can see that. It's an environmental disaster.
All right, thank you.
All right.
I'm Todd Diorio with the Hudson Valley Building Trades. Can you guys hear me already?
Yeah.
With the Hudson Valley Building Trades, I represent 28 trade locals, about 10,000 members in the Hudson Valley. That's Orange, Ulster, Sullivan, and Duchess. Out of all respect to my Building Trades guys, we had a lot more guys out there today. We did not bring them in. We probably turned away 150, and it was another group coming from a union meeting of another 100. We were nice enough, any resident from Montgomery that wanted to get in here, we were going to give up our seats for them, and we would still do that now if there was anybody out here. We have a lot of, we represent, we don't know the exact numbers, we're going to get those numbers for you guys, but out of the 28 trade locals we have, I know myself, just local 17 alone, we have like almost 50 residents in Montgomery, and my local of a 770-member construction union, I know I spoke to Mike Gatos earlier, he's almost, he's almost 45 or 50 from the ironworkers. So, we probably do represent well over, you know, we're probably 700, 800 members within this area. So, we do represent some people. Some of them are here today, some of them can't, some of them are working nights. On this project, you know, to save time, we can ask every one of our guys to come up here and speak. We're going to have a couple reps speak, that's it. We're not going to flood the place, take a lot of your time, because it's going to be repetitive comments from us. So, with the save time, we're not going to ask a lot of speakers to come up and speak. I just want to comment first, my first meeting with Salfish, we deal with a lot of developers. This isn't the only town we do business in. We have four counties. Not a lot of developers come to us. Don Chase, who's here, who I got to know, worked with him in the last year, he stopped in. I can't believe how quickly time goes by. I asked him today when it was, it's been almost two years. He says, I'm by your office, can I stop by? It's not too often developer calls and says, can I stop by and meet with the union? He came in, couldn't make any promises at the time. He didn't know who his GC was going to be. He didn't know how much of the work, where the numbers were going to come in, working here. He said to me when he walked out, he goes, I promise I'll do everything I can to ensure that local labor's on this job and local union labor. I mean, Don's background, he actually started out a little history. He worked for the labors in Rhode Island, going through school. So he knows what it's like to lift a block and a brick. So I trusted him from day one. I had to actually convince some of my Building Trades members to believe in me and Bluefish, that they're telling me the right thing because we have been lied to a lot by developers. I now could honestly say, we met a couple weeks ago when all the numbers came in. There's about ninety million dollars in construction. And right now, he's committed to about eighty-four million to local union labor on this project. I mean, that's a high number for the warehouse industry specifically. He's lived up to his word. We've worked closely with R.C. Anderson, which is his GC. Out of the eighteen contracts right now, fourteen of them have already been awarded to union contractors. And we're still working on the other four. We're doing what we can number-wise to get this project. We could end up, this project being close to a ninety-five, ninety-six percent on union project, which is big in the private sector. There's some points that we want to make and we're familiar with the project. We've read the reports, we've been to some of these meetings, we've met with Don, we've met with the partnership.
You remember. Of course you met with him, you remember.
We are. Limited impact on the town. There's new water and sewer that's being put in, not at the cost of the town, but being done by the developer. It fits into the town's master plan. The wastewater treatment plan on site has no impact. It's in a great, it's in a good location. I mean, say what they say, I know there's going to be an argument about it, but it's where it's located and it's in a good access spot to the highway. It's not driving through a lot of towns, like people are saying. There's four hundred union construction jobs, eight hundred permanent jobs with twenty-five million dollars in payroll. So these guys have lived up to everything they said. Most of the developers we deal with, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't even want to use the word to describe them. These guys have been good. Hopefully, you guys will support this. We don't know where our next job is. It's Building Trades, we're busy now. Next year, we don't know where our next jobs are coming. So we ask this board to please support the Sailfish project. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a comment? Yes, Fred?
Fred Mercer, Village of Montgomery. And if we had an updated master plan, all these things wouldn't be happening the way you are now right now. So that's just your bottom. So after listening to the proposals given by applicants to the planning board, I'm a bit disappointed in y'all come so far. Each applicant is looking to fit a project into an area that's requiring a significant zoning change for a pilot or both cases, most cases both. Although it is growth it can provide for the town and community's jobs, it seems that's where the positive contribution stock. Major warehouses like Sailfish and Medline are impacting areas that hold wetlands and aquifers. Their huge weight and volume displaced water in the areas affected by the... affecting the Tin Brook and Wellkill respectively. But also the construction of both affect the aquifers that supply drinking water to the villages of Walden and Montgomery. But not to forget the individuals who have wells in those areas and take care of their homes and their businesses. And those that use the Tin Brook to supply their farms, they too are going to be affected. Agencies that are in place to assist are overwhelmed. And diligence to both the residents and the projects are not completed to an equal satisfaction. The boards of Montgomery, the boards of the Montgomery government are tasked to care for the residents as well as promote growth. Each board has a mission statement and guidelines to enforce and protect that statement. In casual observance, this is not being done. Residents bring concerns to the forefront to protect their homes. The quality of life are being challenged by the boards who seem not to want to listen based on actions at public hearings, like shuffling of papers, or looking in a phone, or a tablet, or instead of trying to glean what the residents' concerns are. But when an applicant, their representative speaks, it seems their attention span is longer and their hearing more acute. Not all members act this way, just an observation as a whole. Now let's get back to the issue at hand. Blue Water, Sailfish, whatever you want to call it, is requiring zone changes to build their warehouse and also a pilot. Would you want somebody to come, coming to your place of residence, telling you, I'm going to build in your backyard, so to speak, and I want to get you to pay for it? No deal, right? Look at the residents here. Their yard is impacted. It's like putting a square peg in a round hole, forcing it in, damage is going to occur. Now on the other one, little less aggressive. Each village in the town of Montgomery has its own character. I think this is based on the types of businesses that are here as well as the people who live here. This is the heritage of the town and the villages that draw people to live here. Their desire is to be able to raise a family, not just their children, the generations yet to come. This is a sense of value that cannot have a price tag on it, nor should it have one. I like living in a quiet area secluded from the world, so to speak, but yet close enough to step foot into the world when I need to. It's like living in a movie village where local shops occupy the streets. A friendly wave of a hand or a casual, hi, how are you doing, greeting can be made. Yes, it is a dream world, so to speak, but yet it is here. There is a sense of belonging and a desire to want to belong. By not having a plan to allow the outside world to enter, encroachment occurs. The chaos replaces the joy and the peace. The comprehensive plan, along with zoning laws, reach out to the outside world and say, sure, come closer. Let's leave the families here, feel safe and secure. There are areas in the town designed for this. The heritage of the town and the villages being a roadway when those areas are overrun, but still, the come-on-in sign is flashing more often than the lights on a stop school bus. Smart growth allows prosperity as well as a sense of belonging. It also respects the people who live here. This is what I'd like to see happen to the town and the village of Montgomery.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tim Muller. I've been a resident of the village of Walden for over thirty years. I'm also a business representative with the operating engineers locally twenty-five. Locally twenty-five represents over seven thousand members throughout its jurisdiction, which includes Montgomery here in Orange County. Our members operate the heavy equipment machinery seon construction sites. They also work in equipment rental and repair facilities as well as in concrete and asphalt plants and quarries. I'm here this evening to speak in support of Blue Water Partner Sailfish Distribution Center project. Blue Water has proposed to build a state-of-the-art distribution center which would create an estimated eight hundred permanent jobs when completed, and between three to four hundred construction jobs during its build phase. With regard to the construction of the facility, the site work alone could provide my members with thousands of hours of work which is needed for them to thrive for their families. Many of our members and other trade members live here in the area. While many say construction jobs are only temporary jobs, it's jobs like these that support our members' families and also allows us to pay our taxes. While I understand everyone's position on the issue, I feel job creation is crucial. I thank you for your time and consideration of the project.
Thank you.
Nina Snyder, Montgomery, New York. A couple of quick things. One is, I'm strongly opposed to clear-cutting all the trees until all approvals on every level have been met. I think that just is ludicrous. Secondly, I was overwhelmed when I pulled up and saw the big, big lit-up billboard for the trade people. And I do wish everyone gained full employment. And I wish there were jobs for everyone, everywhere. But I have to say, because of temporary jobs, that is not a reason to build a million-square-foot warehouse. And I'm very concerned about the cumulative effects on the Tin Brook. I think that's something that has not been studied adequately. And there's a real concern about the power imbalance. I'm retired and I paid for my T-shirt. And I just wondered if you guys all got your T-shirts. I'm just curious. I just feel as though it's very hard for residents who call this area home to have a voice when the amount of money goes into pursuing temporary jobs, which are important, but we're not in the business of employment. We're in the business of protecting our land and keeping our residents safe. And we're in the business of making bold decisions that we represent the people that live in this community. And I feel as though we don't have a voice when we come to your town meeting, which I've been coming for a year now. And there's no way to get in because there's been advocacy for the unions who want these temporary jobs. Thank you.
I'm Sam Ferrato. I work for the IBW Local 363. I cover Montgomery, our residents that live here. We've seen this in response to projects for forty years, I have. By the way, the notion that these jobs are temporary, I challenge anybody here to name me a permanent job because there are none. There's no such thing as a permanent job. First place you call is people that work for IBM. It's not there anymore. These jobs, there's no job that's permanent. Our jobs, we build the building and then we build the next building. I've been working for forty years straight at a temporary job. I'm looking at your town sign, which says, "Established seventeen eighty-eight". And it's ironic that you have a tractor trailer, an airplane, and a powerhouse on here and you call yourself the transportation hub of the northeast, but you don't want anyone to drive near it or come into it. That makes no sense whatsoever. If this project does not harm the environment, like you're trying to figure out, and if these people answer the questions that are put before them, the response that this is going to, whatever, touch my property or any other thing, doesn't matter. Everybody has a right to go within the rules. You guys are setting rules up. If people come here and they're within the rules, how do you just tell them you don't like them? So be the transportation hub of the northeast and allow something to be built in your place, that's all.
Excuse me, sir, while I'll address the board, I would like to answer one of his questions. If you would like to know a permanent job, talk to a farmer. Because my farm is a historic farm. If you want to see what a historic farm is, look around this room. Look at the pictures. My farm has been operating since the eighteen hundreds and I have a permanent job that is directly affected downstream of this project. You want to be a good neighbor, contain your stormwater. And that's what I ask of this board. So this meeting tonight is in regards to the SEU and the site plan. I ask you guys, please, make them be a good neighbor. Because I'm not against industrial. I'm against the effects of them dumping their stormwater, their wastewater, their salt onto the Tin Brook that flows through my farm. This is where my cows drink. This is where my cows eat. This is how I work. This is my job. So while you guys all have your job here, this is my job.
Before we go any further, we want to stay on topic. We want to stay on the site plan and the SEU permit. I know we're getting off track here a little bit. And I appreciate everybody's concern. But we want to start to wrap things up here a little bit and take comments on the site plan. Yes, John? And please, if everybody could keep their comments, let's hear something new if we've heard something before and keep them short. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred, for inviting us to speak tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the one percenters. Out of this room, less than one percent of people are farmers today. And as Kristen, my daughter-in-law, pointed out, this has been our legacy. We're also a one-percenter because that's the amount of people in this room that either live next to or have the Tin Brook go through their property, which is affected by it. The developers themselves and most of the people in this room are not directly affected. Let me get to the points that you want. Okay. Couple key things. One is, Karina could be here tonight, and as you know, she's a PE. I just want to confirm that her letter came in soon.
Yes.
And it does have some good technical comments, which I think the P's on the board should be able to look at. So I won't go through all of that because of that. You see a lot of people here in this room who hope to work there. You should know that in the plan submitted, the only entrance to this site up through phase six of construction is on seventeen K. The seven forty-seven entrance does not even appear until phase seven of construction. How are all these people going to get to work at this facility? Or the four hundred concrete trucks or everything else?
It's addressed.
It wasn't addressed in the plan?
It's addressed in our findings.
Is that recent?
In our findings.
It's in your findings?
Yes.
Okay, so we have not seen that.
Phase six is not done in numerical order. Phase six will be stepped up because they want to get... Okay, it's geological, geographical, sorry.
So you've addressed that in your findings. We haven't seen that, so I can't comment on what's in that. I was reacting to what's in the FEIS that we had the chance to review. A couple other things. The erosion and sediment plans don't appear to adequately address what happens during construction. And as we all know, and I hope that some of these members here did not participate in Legoland, which during construction destroyed the creek that runs through that farm because that's what will happen to the Tin Brook on our farm. And I certainly would not want my Tin Brook destroyed, not my Tin Brook, but our community's Tin Brook destroyed by runoff from this site. On stormwater or wastewater discharge, I'm sure you're going to address that in the finding statement. But I have two points to address related to the site plan. You mentioned last time the DEC did not allow infiltration. But the question was asked is, would infiltration be allowed under the parking lot? That's an obvious answer, no. The real answer should be, move that parking lot to the other end of the property and then you would be able to do infiltration. They were treating it as the site plan was fixed, which it was not. It could easily have been modified to allow an infiltration area. So I just want to correct that, that I've read the DEC documents and it didn't say infiltration could not be used. Said it could not be used under a parking lot. The second thing is, I didn't see on the site plans where if in fact you allow this wastewater discharge into the Tin Brook, where you're going to put up the sign? You have to put up the sign that says, this is a wastewater discharge, don't drink the water. Where are you going to put that? Are you going to put that on seventeen K? I think you ought to put it in Worcester Grove so the kids that are playing there can realize what is the flow in the Tin Brook during the summer when the natural flow has dried up. Just a couple last things. I find it interesting that these guys call themselves Blue Water, but what will happen to the Tin Brook won't be Blue Water. And how many Sailfish signs do we have? Hold them up.
Count them, how many you got?
Okay. Well, that's great because you guys love Sailfish. And when you put the salt in the Tin Brook, that's where Sailfish live. They live in saltwater. They live in saltwater, and that's what you're going to turn our Tin Brook into. Please don't let this happen.
Yes? Beth, Beth Ray?
Yes, hello. Thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Can you talk on the site plan? We want to talk on the aspects of the site plan, okay?
Yes. So regarding the site plan and the runoff and the stormwater situation, I would like to, I've written you before, but I'd like to direct you to some more current research on the algae blooms that are happening. A DEC website is an excellent source of that. We've had them in the Walk Hill already. And the Tin Brook, as you know, goes right into the Walk Hill. So with the whole situation of the stormwater runoff and the drainage and turning the Tin Brook into a drainage ditch, you may put those algae blooms toward the drinking water source of the Walden residence, as well as those immediately around. It will also affect your tourism, because those blooms are deadly. People aren't going to want to come and recreate on the Walk Hill anymore. So please, consider public health when looking at this and our environment. Thank you.
How you doing?
My name is David Monisterski. I may come with the ease of board or nor rehearse speech. I live in a town of Walden. I'm very concerned about this town, about the whole project, the whole traffic. Nobody wants to be caught in traffic either. I would also like to bring attention to you of last week or so's meeting I came to, how town is in dire straits of money. There is no money in this town. They're saying this takes us over forty minutes to get an ambulance. I'll be dead. I need an ambulance. They're saying 80% is on Medicaid. How is this town ever going to get their money back? Need jobs? Yes. Sailfish, yes!
Thank you for hearing me. I have a question for the board. One of us is dealing with the zoning law and dealing with this. In the SEU section, it states, that's 130-40. I can't recall whether it's dot 20 or 30 in that section. It requires you to evaluate this on the lands that are allotted for that zone in both size and for the right for that expansion to be considered. This is not right size for the zone. They are asking for further zones to accomplish the task. And I see no expansion in the documents. So it doesn't appear that that component of the SEU, which requires us to examine that in specific, is being facilitated. It is being assumption that this building is size, which is in understanding for all. The largest NFL stadium in the United States is MetLife. This will be, and that includes the parking lots, just slightly less than half that size. This is what you're evaluating in this wetland. The mass alone and the grounds below. We don't know what's really going to happen. So in the SEU, I'm asking the board, why are we going forward with something that doesn't even show an expansion of use capability, which the zoning law calls for? And it also calls for it to be right size for the zones. I understand it's an industrial zone, but they're asking to go also into the IB zone. I also like to state that it's for jobs as part of your SEU and health benefit welfare. Yes, there are jobs. They may be permanent, but they are poverty level. I understand jobs for unions. One of my very best friends is a union person. But they make very, very good money. Very good money. More than I ever made an hour. And they travel. What they're asking for this town is for us as residents to be forced to commute. Because the businesses that are being brought in here, which is part of your oversight, are not facilitating professional-level jobs. And you're forcing the residents to commute to get these jobs. Another thing, safety. I experience I-84 using 17K as a bypass more often now than ever. It has taken me over two hours to travel from one exit to my home near here. The board has yet to answer or respond to in an event where I-84 now uses 17K and 208 as an emergency bypass route with N-10 truck. And I have video of this last event. It has not been addressed to us. God forbid it be both ends. How is our emergency response, when seconds matter in our lives, going to get to us? If I want an ambulance, I want it to come to my door in time. Two thousand vehicles from one warehouse. The facilitation of another warehouse, even by our zone law, is actually increasing the level of warehouse use on the available industrial land to the point of becoming discriminatory, as I stated before, to other future uses. Thereby, in an economic downturn or contraction. It is not unlikely for us to have abandonment of these very large monolithic structures that have absorbed these lands. I need you to consider these things, and they have not been answered. So to the union folk that want job, I want a job in my town. I respect their needs. But your board, your job, as being appointed by the people elected by the people of this town and the council you seek and the engineers you use, they need to further the interest, the health, the benefit, and the welfare, not just of business interests, interests external, such as Orange County Partners or Albany. Your job is to foresee our future and the over 24,000 residents who need and live within the confines of the surrounds. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Susan?
Feel for you, you in particular, because this is what you're doing. The SEU permit, you know, the Tin Brook is an intermittent stream. You're going to discharge into an intermittent stream, which means you're going to create flow from wastewater and runoff. Bad idea. Major mistake. Someone mentioned IBM. They polluted the entire aquifer in Fishkill. So you're looking to do something similar here with the amount of impervious surface that you're creating. I think what the circus atmosphere is because we don't have a master plan. They killed it. They had one, then they killed it, and then they cob-jobbed it. So what you guys were all trotted in is probably because on the internet, it lists the town of Montgomery as having lenient zoning and approval on Quantum Realty website. So it's kind of the Realtors, the partnership, they know that we're here with all our doors open and the windows open, and there's no protections in place. Why don't you get the plans right so that people can build things that they're happy to see have happened in their community? That last, that can be reused if you get your zoning code right. Right now, you've got nothing on the books. This does not fit. Even the old 1960s hubcap of the Northeast thing. You've got nothing in place for something of this size. And you're going to pollute the aquifer, guaranteed.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Alentis. Just one quick item about the Arnott House, because that's kind of gotten lost in the shuffle. So you had a letter in December from John Bonafidi in Parks, right? And he suggested that they save the house and move it. Okay, so is that part of the agreement at this point? Okay. There's, it's a little disconcerting, though, to see the condition of the house at this point. So if they're going to be saving it, then why haven't they protected it up till now? I mean, it's totally overgrown, it's worse than ever.
They're going to have to repair it so they can move it, I'm sure.
What?
They're going to have to repair it so they can move it?
Right, but the condition that it looks in right now, I mean, totally overgrown, which if you're going to be moving, saving something or protecting something, then...
They may not own it yet?
I don't know.
That's probably the reason.
I don't know.
That'd be my guess, okay?
Okay. But that is part, that's part of the promise that they're making?
Yes, they're committed to doing that.
Yeah. As you know, SHPO is pretty careful on this stuff. They laid out protocols and timelines to...
Yeah, I'll talk...
Adaptive reuse of that structure, which probably wouldn't happen.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thanks.
Any else? Board, any comments, concerns this time? Okay. I think we've gotten everything we need. I think it's time we enter a motion to close the hearing on the carrying on the site plan and SEU permit. I'd like to entertain a motion to do that by Jay. Seconded by Bill. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, I have a brief statement to read here. The SEER regulations require that the planning board issue its finding statement within thirty days of the filing of the FEIS. The purpose of the finding statement is to evaluate identified impacts to and to mitigate them to the maximum extent practical. This is a direct quote from Section 8-0109 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law. This is not an approval of the site plan, nor is it a granting of the special use permit for the warehouse. Those determinations must await actions by other agencies. Sometime later this year, the planning board will consider the site plan as special permit applications. We have in front of us a 114-page draft finding statement. The document was first provided to planning board members almost three weeks ago. Leslie Dodson, our planner, has been the clearinghouse for all individual board members and consultants, comments, questions, and revisions. Over the past three weeks, board members have received multiple drafts of this document and have been extensively involved in its multiple revisions along the way. We therefore will not read, well, I will not read the entire document, but I will read the table of contents. And then I'd like to highlight some of the issues where we have tried to deliver the best possible result allowed by the laws that regulate what we, as a planning board, can see and cannot, can do and cannot do. Okay, table of contents. Of course, it's an introduction and a description of the proposed action. Project description, purpose and need, project's SEER history, SEER findings. Under three, findings concerning potential environmental impacts and mitigation measures. Land use, zoning, and public policy. Visual character, infrastructure and utilities, traffic and transportation, community facilities and services, soils and geology, surface water resources, wetlands, cultural resources, noise, flora and fauna, fiscal and economic impacts, air quality. Then there's construction impacts. Then there's alternatives. Under five, alternatives, no action, alternative, alternative, site layout, alternate site layout based on existing zoning, alternate location for proposed action, alternative access option. And then under six, potential growth-inducing aspects. Seven is unavoidable adverse impacts. Eight, impacts on energy use. Under that, there's energy use. Future physical risks due to sea level rise, storm surge and flooding. Under nine, irreversible and irretrievable commitment of environmental resources. Under that, there's other issues. And then under tenant certification. Now, just briefly going through this, because as I said, it's a long document. I'll give you the description first. Description of action. The project consists of the development of a warehouse distribution center located on 187.7 acres of vacant land bordering on Interstate Highway I-84 and New York's routes 17K and 747 in the town of Montgomery. The warehouse distribution center would consist of a building containing 1,000, 1,018,880 square feet of space. And among other things, 1,060 car parking spaces, 225 trailer parking spaces, wastewater treatment facility, WWTP for abbreviation, water treatment facility and water tank, stormwater management basin and improvements, accessory driveways to and from the site, lighting, landscaping, signage, and other related improvements. The project requires a site plan approval and special exception use permit from the planning board. The project also includes a zoning map amendment from the Town of Montgomery Town Board to rezone approximately 77 acres of the project site from the IB interchange business zoning district, excuse me, to the I-2 industrial park major access zoning district. Project location. New York State Route 17K and New York State Route 747, Town of Montgomery, New York. Tax ID number, Section 31 Block 1, Lot 64, 65.22, 89 and 70.2. These four lots will be consolidated into one lot to facilitate the project. The subdivision is not required. Under access to public sewer. No public sewers were available to serve the project. The closest public sewers located in a nearby town in Newburgh. Pursued to existing agreements with the city of Newburgh, the Town of Montgomery is not allowed to provide sewer service to properties located outside of the Town of Newburgh. As a result, the project is not able to connect to this public sewer. The planning board investigated the potential to use a subsurface disposal system for the project's sanitary wastewater. As discussed in more detail below, the DEC would not permit the use of such a system on the project site. And therefore, the planning board had no choice but to abandon the consideration of that option. As a result, a small WW wastewater treatment plant will be constructed on the site to serve the project. It will have the ability to be expanded and upgraded in the future to serve other properties in this area of the town if desired by the Town of Montgomery. The wastewater treatment plant will be offered for future dedication to the Town of Montgomery. The offer of dedication will be recorded in the Orange County Clerk's office. Blue Water Industrial will pay the cost to construct and maintain the wastewater treatment plant. No town funds will be used to construct or maintain the plant. The town is under no obligation to accept dedication or ownership of the wastewater treatment plant. The planning board has recommended that the town will not accept the ownership or operation of the wastewater treatment plant at this time. Prior proposals. The planning board also received, this is on page 10. The planning board also received prior development application for this site and adjacent property that were withdrawn or abandoned by the applicants before the planning board completed its review, including, in 1988, there was a draft environmental impact statement for Verticon Non-Nuance Industrial Distribution Center, which was 1.1 million square feet. And in 2009, there was a draft environmental impact statement for Hudson International Business Center, HIBC. That was 1.5 million square feet. In 2015, we had a DEIS for Resorts World Hudson Valley Casino. That was 1.7 million square feet. That was a prior proposal. Leslie, you had something from Rich on page ten?
Yeah, there are just actually a couple of items in there.
Okay.
Actually, I'm...
Yes, completed its review?
On page nine, I should mention, we also want to add under A, the list of awards and maybe some of the public policy to add towards the town.
Okay. Very good, thank you, Rich. Leslie? Okay. Prior proposal. Page 12, board. The project site under eight, right at the top of the page, a project site contains 187.7 acres of land, of which approximately 82 acres is being disturbed to accommodate the project. The remaining 106 acres of land is not being disturbed. The majority of the site is remaining in its natural state. Now, on page 22. Let's see, Bill, you had something on page... Now, on page twenty-two, uh, let's see, Bill, you had something on page twenty-three. Okay. Um, under U, okay, I'll get to that. Um, "The lighting plans are designed in accordance with the town zoning law. The applicant has worked with the planning board's lighting expert and a proficient lighting supplier to make sure that all luminaires themselves have physical shielding at all locations to minimize off-site glare. All lighting fixtures will be down, down-directed and employ a modern LED lighting source with warmer color temperatures. All lighting levels meet the recommendations of the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America and will not create significant adverse sky glow. Accordingly, the planning board determines that it is, has reduced and avoided significant adverse visual, visual impact from the project lighting." Now, uh, let's see, when you shielded takeout in key locations.
In the next paragraph, we just need to change the words, move it all. It under new-
Yes.
-middle of that paragraph, I can, I, um, move the words, need to change it to also, all light fixtures have shielded in all locations.
Yes, yep.
Yes.
And also, uh, Bill, you had, um, create-
Change.
Yeah, create adverse glare. Do excessive. Agree?
I, uh, the fifth line down, no light fixtures have shielded, and cross out in key locations.
Yep.
Every fixture has a shield.
Okay.
And, uh, in line eight, line eight, "This compliance demonstrates the project will not create excessive glare or excessive light pollution that would be harmful to health and very good."
Everybody got that?
No.
Page twenty-three, thank you, Bill. Okay. Okay, on page thirty-three. "The planning board conducted a detailed evaluation of the potential use of subsurface sewage disposal systems on the project's site in place of the wastewater treatment plant to treat the sanitary wastewater generated from the project. Based on the design flow, a subsurface sewage disposal system would encompass approximately four to five acres of land based on DEC standards. A system of this side, size, would involve the need for additional tree-clearing, land disturbance, potential, potential wetland disturbance, and additional wetland-adjacent-area disturbance. In addition, on its own initiative, the planning board considered whether subsurface disposal system could be installed under the parking lots on a project's site, with the thought that the level areas that would be created by site grading for the creation of the parking lots might be able to be used for septic leach field if the soil perk rate was sufficient. The planning board communicated with DEC on this matter and was advised by DEC that, based on the agency's design standards, an absorption field should not be used under a parking lot, nor has the Orange County Department of Health allowed subsurface systems under parking lots. Accordingly, the planning board concluded that a subsurface disposal system was not feasible for the project's site." Okay. Under traffic, um, at the very top, on page thirty-nine. "New York State, New York State Department of Transportation has reviewed and accepted the traffic impact study and proposed mitigation measures to reduce or avoid significant adverse traffic impacts on the surrounding highway system." And, let's get the paragraph.
Um, if we could, um, if it just makes sense, based on what it's discussing, we should just move, report a sentence with, uh-
Report to Orange County Department of Health. As far as intercepts.
Yes.
Okay, so back on page thirty-three.
Yep.
So, under the park, under parking lots, period.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, now, we are back to traffic. "It should be noted that the applicant has agreed to install modems and disconnect switches at signalized intersections at the Route seventeen K corridor. Installation of this equipment at these intersections will provide the DOT with the ability to more conveniently monitor and optimize the capacity of the signal to improve the conveyance and efficiency of, through moving vehicles along seventeen K, which could potentially reduce the frequency of rear-end collisions at the intersections." Everybody get that?
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, moving up to page fifty-five. "Under N, site grading has been adjusted in an effort to balance a site from a cut-to-fill perspective. Based on the revised grading scheme, the anticipated export has been reduced significantly from a hundred and thirty thousand cubic yards to approximately twelve, uh, twelve thousand, three hundred cubic yards." Under P. "A variety of erosion sediment control measures, including enhanced control measures discussed later in these findings, will be used during construction within each stage to manage the transport of sediment prior to reaching the temporary sediment basins. These measures generally include the following: stabilized construction entrance, dust control, temporary soil stockpiles, silk fencing, fencing, temporary seating, stone or proprietary, proprietary inlet protection barriers, stone check dams, water bars, fiber rolls, sediment filter bags, and erosion control matting." Up to page sixty-three, under V. "To reduce potential impacts from road salt used during the winter months at the project's site, the planning board evaluated a report prepared by the Dutchess County Environmental Management Council and the Cary Institute of Ecosystem Studies entitled Road Salt the Problem, the Solution, How to Get There, back in two thousand and ten. The report concluded that the impacts of road salt on the environment can be significantly reduced and, reduced, and recommended best management practices that, if followed, would achieve this reduction. These best management practices include the following, which the applicant will implement at the project's site. Apply a twenty-three percent salt brine solution to pretreat areas before the onset of ice and snow. It is estimated that this practice alone could yield a seventy-five percent reduction in salt applied. Free wet salt before applying. This allows the salt to better stick to pavement, which will minimize spray and kick-up of salt grains. Calibrate equipment to measure exactly how much salt is applied, facilitating more accurate and efficient de-icing with less salt used. Use automated spreader controls, which allow salt truck operators to program salt application rates so that the amount of salt being applied charge, changes with ground speed, which reduces bounce and scatter. No salt will be stored on the project's site. Require the contractor to use modern snow plow designed to reduce the amount of road salt needed to maintain ice-free pavement. This would include live-edge blades or flexible plow blades, both designed to conform to uneven surfaces, thus reducing the overall amount of salt needed. And lastly, do not, do not structure the snow management contract based on the amount of salt applied. This encourages contractors to oversalt areas. Any contract with a snow management company must legally obligate the contractor to follow the best management practices above." Page sixty-four, very end of the page. "There will be a series of qualified professionals inspecting the sediment and erosion control measure during construction to ensure that they are functioning properly. As required by the SWIP, the applicant will employ a qualified professional to make routine inspections of the sediment and erosion control. The applicant will also have a dedicated crew to repair and maintain the sediment and erosion control measures. Number two, the town will hire a qualified professional to oversee the entire site from a sediment and erosion control perspective. The cost of the town inspector will be paid for by the applicant. The frequency of inspections are discussed in more, more detail below." Moving up to page sixty-eight, last paragraph. "The project's SWIP and the stormwater practices proposed for the projects are in compliance with all town and New York State regulations, including compliance with New York Stormwater Management Design Manual. Nonwithstanding with this compliance, to be overly conservative, the planning board's stormwater control engineer has recommended that the following enhanced stormwater control measures be utilized at the project's site as part of the SWIP to ensure that stormwater will be managed above and beyond the control measures typically required by the town and the DEC stormwater regulations. The applicant has agreed to employ these enhanced control measures as part of the project. These measures include the following: provide oversized sediment basins. Generally, the sediment basins are sized based on the contributing drainage area that is a hundred percent greater than the actual drainage area. As noted above, temporary sediment basins shall have a minimum capacity for seventy-two-hundred cubic feet per acre disturbed. Disturbed areas shall be stabilized immediately upon completion of the required grading activity, and such stabilization shall be completed within seven days. The applicant will supply an adequate amount of water during this time period to, to establish vegetation to a ninety percent cover. Disturbed areas shall be stabilized temporarily with a bonded fiber matrix hydraulically-applied seed and mulch. Where necessary, install slope crest protection perimeter swale measures to divert flow from impacting disturbed slopes. Install geosynthetic turf reinforcement matting available from profile products or equal on the embankments of sediment basins immediately following construction. Install geosynthetic turf reinforcement mats available from public profile or equal along permanent swales once fine grading is completed. Final slopes shall be stabilized with hydraulically-applied erosion control flexible growth medium with seed, soil amendments, and fertilizer available from profile products or, or equal. If necessary, provide water skimmers connected to the outlet riser pipe and sediment ponds. Install sediment filter bags on the downstream end of all outlet pipes. Stabilize access road, including construction entrances with gravel, mulch, or mats to prevent dirt from being tracked onto Route seventeen K or Route seven forty-seven. Provide a dedicated crew to repair and maintain sediment and control, and erosion control measures during construction on a daily basis, including sweeping any dirt that may inadvertently be tracked onto Route seventeen K and Route seven forty-seven from construction vehicles. Any deficiencies will be corrected immediately. The applicant will use floating skimmers to discharge sediment pond storage rather than perforated pipe at the base of the, sediment basin surrounded with stone." Up to page seventy-seven, E. "Only one historic resource was identified on the project's site. The Arnott Haber House, located on the project's site along New York State Route seven forty-seven, was determined eligible for listing on the National Register of Historical, Historical Places by SHIP-O in nineteen ninety-nine under criteria and C for its architectural significance. The Arnott, Arnott Haber House has been abandoned and vacant for some time. The interior rooms are strewn with trash and debris, and in some places, the rooms are impassable due to debris accumulation." Next, page seventy-eight, "To deal with the Arnott Haber House," under I. "With respect to the Arnott Haber House, of the identified historical sites, only the Arnott Haber House would be adversely impacted by the project. To minimize the immediate impact to this historic resource, the project's sponsor has proposed relocating the house roughly sixty feet to the north of its present location." The protocols. "The relocation will be undertaken by a reputable relocation firm and will progress in consultation with SHIP-O. A rehabilitation plan for the Arnott, Arnott Haber House that adheres to the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation will be prepared and presented to SHIP-O for review and comment prior to the physical relocation of the building. The rehabilitation plan, which will place the house back into this, into a state of modern utility, will be fully executed within two years of relocation. Appropriate access parking area, septic well, and buffering will be developed as part of the plan based on the end use. Applicant will provide ongoing upkeep and maintenance of the building before relocation, post-relocation, and post-rehabilitation for a period of five years or until an appropriate long-term tenant arrangement can be made. Applicant will first seek historic preservation groups, historic groups, museums, or other similar tenants to utilize the house before residential tenants. Document, documentary photographs chronicling, chronicling the relocation and rehabilitation of the building will be prepared and submitted to the SHIP-O upon completion of the work." Page eighty-one, under noise, mitigation, I. "Even though no adverse, significant adverse noise impact, impacts are expected from the project to be, the project to be conservative, and to minimize potential complaints from vehicle backup alarms, the project will equip switcher engines for all tenant trucks with smart ambient sensing, multi-frequency backup alarms. This type of alarm is commonly called a shusher alarm due to the type of noise it produces. These devices reduce the noise generated from constant level pure tones from beeping Page eighty-six, um, wildlife habitat, under T. "Over a hundred acres of contiguous forest and wetland habitat will remain on the site and will not be disturbed. The project also maintains a one-hundred-foot upland buffer around all the wetlands on the site, and therefore maintains a relationship for species using both wetlands and uplands. Also, the project's landscaping plans contain hundreds of native trees and shrubs, which were suggested by the board's landscape architect to provide future upland habitat for wildlife." Page eighty-seven, towards the bottom, B-B, just to give a quick relationship. "Five hundred and seventy shade trees and evergreen trees will be planted on site to replace some forested habitat lost from the project. An extensive landscaping plan is included in the FEIS." Now, uh, Rich had a comment on page eighty-eight, Leslie?
Yeah, I, um, just wanted to, to add as a mitigation measure for, for the wetlands, definitely, had the, um, forty-five foot arch bottom, uh, arch, open bottom culvert, uh, that's gonna be used across the, the wetland from seven forty-seven, is also a mitigation measure. That's-
Oh, to add it as a mitigation measure?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's a, a forty-five foot arch culvert gonna be put in there-
Yes.
-to allow for the, the animals to, uh, so JJ, Kate, no, can't do KK. Alright. Thirty-five foot arch culvert. Movements?
Well, and, and also, it avoids disturbing the, the private environment.
The forty-five foot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the open bottom.
Arch culvert, open bottom, okay, thank you. Okay, we're getting there. Okay, next, um, page ninety-four, construction hours. H. "General construction will occur from seven to five, seven AM to five PM, with the majority of work to be completed by three-thirty daily. Some Saturday work may occur with the same hours, but not every week. No work will occur on Sundays or national holidays. Longer days may occur infre-in frequently during slap pours." Under, okay, page one-eleven, conclusion. "Having considered the DEIS, FEIS, and other project documentation, and having considered the facts, conclusions, and findings discussed above the planning, above, the planning board hereby certifies that: A, it has considered all of the relevant environmental impacts, facts, and conclusions disclosed in the DEIS and FEIS. B, it has weighed and balanced the relevant environmental impacts of the project with social, economic, and other considerations. C, these findings provide a rationale for the lead agency's decision. D, the requirements of SEAKER have been met. And D, consistent with social, economic, and other essential considerations, from among the reasonable alternatives available, the action is one that avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum, maximum extent practicable. And that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating as conditions to the decision these mitigative measures that were identified as practicable." Question board? Okay. Any questions, board, on anything? I think we covered everything. Thank you all for your hard work. Thank you all for your hard work.
I'm, um, using the, I'm also noticing there's some, like, situation.
Okay.
Actually, I give you a context, situations.
Okay.
It's kind of an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the findings for those edits that we've made in our discussion. Motion by Rich, seconded by Jay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, what I wanted to let everyone know, as soon as we get those edits done, this is going to be put on the webpage, so you'll be able to access it online. You won't have to come in here and foil it or anything. You're going to get this hundred, bold, one-hundred-and-thirteen-page document. You can put that on your computer in the comfort of your home. It'll probably be Wednesday or Thursday, by the time everything gets done. Probably Thursday. I thank you all for your concern and your patience with us this evening and for all your comments. Motion to adjourn. By Bill, seconded by Jay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you, everybody.